Okay, 2 o'clock everybody. 2 o'clock on Friday afternoon for the Board of Selectmen. I would like to call our May 22 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 2 o'clock. And I'd like to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting will be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anybody recording the meeting at this time? I do not see any. So if you change your mind during the meeting, if you could raise your hand and let us all know as required by Massachusetts law, I appreciate that. So we have one item on our agenda today, and that's to sign the warrant for the 2020 annual town meeting. Usually that is, you know, very soon after the conclusion of all the budget and warrant hearings, and it's a, you know, fairly routine exercise. But I think in the world we live in today, nothing is a routine exercise, including the signing of the warrant by the Board of Selectmen. So I'd like to, I'd like to propose, I'd like to propose an alternative to our typical meeting in the high school gymnasium. I'd like to take you through a little bit of the conversations I've had with the team around town. And my sort of basic rationale for offering this alternative, and the reason for asking us to think about, about the specifics of the location of town meeting is just that the warrant itself provides notice to taxpayers and citizens as to when and where the meeting will take place. So it is with that that I would like us to think about, and I know we all have been thinking about, what may be the safest possible location for a town meeting during these very uncertain times. And so let me start off by saying, it's really been over the course of, you know, like the last month or so, that I think, again, all of us have been thinking about, well, what about town meeting? Particularly in light of the restrictions that are in place on gatherings in Massachusetts in excess of 10 people. The thing I would point out is that town meetings are, our town meeting, like any town meeting, is actually a legislative body and is not subject to the Governor's restrictions on gatherings. So, you know, you might say, well, how does the Senate in the Commonwealth meet, or the House of Representatives in the Commonwealth meet? And that's because they are not subject, like any, like any legislature, to the order by the Governor. That said, we are a gathering in excess of 10, and it doesn't really matter what label you put on it, and Susan Sarnie's on the line, it's a gathering. And so how do we best gather and where do we best gather to conduct the business of the town? So, so one alternative to gathering in the gymnasium, the auditorium, and the various classrooms at the high school would be to move the meeting outside, to the high school athletic field, and to set that field up, I think right now we're thinking widthwise, spacing people at appropriate socially distant locations across the field, utilizing, you know, probably both the sound system for the high school athletic complex as well as, you know, supplemental sound that we would work with both Harbor Media and our loyal, our loyal sound consultant, Bonner, to make sure that we can get it right. But I guess from where I was coming from, it was important to me that we offer people the best chance to attend. And if, taking off my Board of Selectmen hat for a minute, if I had the option of attending a meeting inside or outside, I personally would feel more comfortable going outside. I realize that raises a whole host of issues that the town team has already thought about and would, you know, really have to bring to ground in, in every single aspect of the meeting. But I think the question for you, Joe, and you, Mary, is, is it worth at least considering moving to an outdoor venue as a way to, again, present a venue where, you know, we could potentially mitigate some risk in people attending the meeting? So I don't know whether you have comments you'd like to make, or whether you'd like to understand a little further what some of the more granular aspects of moving the meeting outside would, would look like, and I know that Tom and his team have given some thought to that as well. But Joe, do you have any comments to make at this point in the meeting?
Yeah, I do. I know that other towns are planning outdoor town meetings. I believe Arlington is planning to have their, has scheduled their town meeting to be outside. And I think, given the choice of being in a confined space versus an open space these days, I would prefer an open space, and I think it's most likely healthier for everyone. The concerns I had were accommodating seniors, accommodated folks who may need a little more assistance, handicapped accessibility, but those are not novel issues. Those are issues that the school has dealt with every year when they do their graduation ceremonies outside. So I think we've got a way to handle that, and I'm sure Tom and his staff will let us know how that would happen. So I mean, I'm in favor of it. The challenge, the other challenges may be acoustics, making sure everyone can hear. And obviously, the weather is a factor, so I note that we've got a rain date proposed for the next day. And the alternative, if it's raining both days, as I understand it, would be actually to have an inside meeting. And it's that final alternative that's, that's a concern, because I think it would now be putting people into a risky situation. I don't know what other options we have, whether we could convene to another date so that we were not forced to be inside. All the, all the reasons that are pushing us outside now don't go away if it's raining. Those reasons still exist. So I'm hoping we'll have some discussion about that.
Thank you, Mary. I think, just as a, as a starting point, I think what would help me is just to get a sense of what led to the recommendation to do the entire warrant. I know that there are other communities who, you know, some, I agree with Joe, I know other communities are going outside. I'm aware that there are other communities that are also looking at, you know, for example, truncating the warrant and only doing the articles that are absolutely necessary right now, and then holding a meeting in the fall. And I guess where I'm coming from, and I reflect back on our meeting Tuesday night, where, you know, there was, there was a lot of discussion about a planning and zoning article. I definitely agree that, that one of our responsibilities is to give people the best chance to attend the meeting. But I think there's another consideration here as well, which is, we have a responsibility to make sure that the articles, that, that town meeting as a legislative body has the best chance to consider the articles. And, and while I appreciate and agree with the idea of trying to move the meeting along, I, I also understand that a lot of the decisions that are being made are important ones. You know, the, the purchase of the Lincoln House, planning zoning articles. And what I'm, what I'm just trying to kind of get my arms around is, is whether with, you know, even, even with maintaining safety and having the meeting outdoors, is there going to be an appropriate level of deliberation that's possible for these warrant articles? And I guess maybe, Karen, if, if you could just, you know, I guess I, I just wonder, to what extent was that option discussed, considered? If so, kind of what led to the recommendation to try to complete the entire warrant outdoors? That, that would just help me, you know, understand where, you know, some of the thinking that's led to the recommendation.
Sure, I'm happy to try to respond. Obviously, a lot packed in there. So let me, let me see if I can parse it out. I think that the, the discussion with the moderator and the town clerk in terms of, and frankly, the advisory committee in considering, in considering what, what town meeting 2020 would ask to be, would ask to consider, I think, it's my understanding that the moderator is intending to review the warrant and think about being able to potentially bundle certain of the like, sort of like, articles. So there's a potential that we could, we could conduct the business of the town, consider all the articles in the warrant, or for instance, the perennial articles that are really just a vote, right? DCR liability, handle Lincoln Whiting Fund, acceptance of easements. You know, there's probably 10 of those that, again, I don't mean to speak for the moderator, but I think the intent is to review the warrant and to try to bring some efficiency to the consideration of the articles by town meeting. In terms of, I think, putting off the major business of the town to the fall, as you know, there are a couple, two or three, four or five items on the agenda that are timely that I, I think that if we're going to have a meeting, it, they ought to and should be considered prior to the end of the fiscal year, and that would include the purchase of the Lincoln House as well as the request for feasibility money for the Public Safety Building and, you know, senior center, Public Safety Building in particular because of the timing we are under for the potential purchase of the parcel that we've identified. I think there was some consideration by the moderator and by me, frankly, that if we're going to hold this meeting, then, and we're going to ask people to make an effort to attend, given all of the circumstances that go into that decision, then it ought to be a meeting. Like it, it ought to, I guess, embrace the fact that people have chosen to attend. So, you know, the moderator again said, some town meetings, you know, go almost entirely to a consent agenda. He was not of the opinion that we needed to go that far. I think he, again, was thinking about bringing some efficiency to the consideration of warrant articles. I frankly don't know where we're going to be in the fall. And so I think that to take, to take the chance to say, we're going to put our business off until the fall, I think we run the risk that we're, we're back where we were before we are, you know, before the opening phases of the Commonwealth. And so I'm, I, I think there are meaningful things that the legislature of our town needs to undertake, and I guess I feel like there's some uncertainty in, in thinking that we're going to be able to do that business in the fall.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with the recommendation. I'm just trying to understand sort of the thinking that led up to it, because I don't think there are any easy answers in this.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was a bunch of balancing, right? It was, okay, if we're gonna have this, if we're gonna have, well, we think outside's better, right? So if we're gonna be outside, we're outside. So now that we're outside, what do we do outside? And I think, again, that the, the thinking at the time was, if we're gonna be outside and we're gonna ask 300 people to show up to provide us with a quorum, we ought to have business for those 300 people to do, on the one hand. On the other hand, we ought to make that business as efficient as possible. And so the other element, Mary, that I think needs to go into all of this, both from a logistical standpoint as well as a substantive standpoint, is communication about what's on the warrant, why it's on the warrant, what the pros and cons are to the articles on the warrant. And so there was a, a commitment to work on a communication plan with the advisory committee and the moderator on those points. And other towns are doing that as well, where, you know, and it's not a pre-meeting meeting, but it's, you know, maybe more outreach on the warrant articles than we would have done in the past, so that when people walk in there, they have a sense of the pros and cons of the major articles. Last but not least, as you're aware and Joe's aware, there is legislation pending that would allow the town to reduce its quorum to no less than 10% of our current quorum, which is our current quorum to open town meeting is 300 people, and to continue on a second night is 200 people. You know, so we could reduce quorum to, to, you know, in the extreme, 30 taxpayers. But in that case, under the present legislation, which has not passed yet, we'd only be able to consider the budget and FEMA, FEMA maps. So I think that, I guess maybe the other thing to keep in mind is that, and you know, Susan Sarnie, maybe we'll speak to this later, this isn't the way we like to do things, right? Because we like to make a plan, and we're gonna make a plan. But the other piece of this is, if the world looks worse as we approach this date, we may have legislative options to, as you, as you pointed out, conduct the very essential business of the town and leave everything else off to the side. Or we could on our own decide to truncate the warrant. The moderator has indicated that he would review the warrant, again, with the advisory committee, and perhaps recommend a number of no-action votes to be able to move through and only consider, let's say, you know, a dozen articles. So I think this is our plan. We will, we will do our best to execute on this plan, if that's what we decide this afternoon. But to me, it's not set in stone if conditions in the Commonwealth worsen.
Yep. I just want to pick up on that, and I see that John Coughlin is, is on the line, so if I misstate it, if I misstate this, maybe he can jump in. One of the questions that I had was, if, if in making this vote to adopt the warrant, are we essentially saying to the town, all of these 37, I believe, articles will go forward? And John clarified for me yesterday a point you just made, Karen, which is that, you know, once we as a board vote on this warrant, we are essentially saying to the town, this is the business that we're going to take up at this meeting, and that, you know, should circumstances change, the, the moderator would have the only discretion at that point to truncate. And, you know, that's, I just, you know, I, I think that's important for us all to understand because, because we, you know, we're essentially saying, this is what, this is what will go forward. Now, obviously...
Can we ask John to comment on that? Because if, I mean, I think, I think that's right with the, with the state of play now, but depending on what the legislature does, we may have an alternative.
Yes, I think under the current law, I think you're both saying the same thing. I think once you issue the warrant, you're essentially setting the agenda for town meeting. You don't get to go back and revise that again. You're putting it in town meeting's hands at that point. So if you decide, under the current standard of the law, that we want to narrow this down at town meeting, you'd have to do that through some process of the moderator and the advisory committee recommending no action on a bunch of items and just skipping over them. You wouldn't be issuing a new warrant to the printer and a new notice. Once that's done, it's done. And then if the meeting couldn't be held that day because the public health emergency continued to deteriorate, or we went back, you know, back to what it was in March or April, the moderator has the authority to continue town meeting to another date based on that 3910A statute that gives him the authority for a public health emergency to continue the date. So it does shift to the moderator and the town meeting as a legislative body once the Board of Selectmen take a vote to issue the warrant. And then we don't know, and then we don't know about the issue of whether there'll be the ability to do a lower quorum and under what circumstances, because that's a pending draft bill that's in the Ways and Means Committee, we just, we really don't know at this point what's going to come out the other end. We're hopeful that there'll be the ability to lower the quorum for a wide-ranging town meeting agenda, depending on how the town wants to handle it. But we, right now, we just don't know what's going to come out the other end on that.
Thank you, John.
Have we done, Karen, have we done an outreach?
Let me just ask, Mary.
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything else at that point, Mary?
No, you know, I just want to, I just want to avoid a circumstance where, you know, even if, you know, let's just say if something happened down the road and, and we needed to do that, you know, we needed to do something. I just don't want to be put in a situation, if possible, where the Board of Selectmen has to recommend no action on something as a procedural way for it not to happen, and then all of a sudden, you know, and, and we've, we've sponsored most of these articles. So, you know, when we do get back together, I, I don't want to be in a situation of saying, well, the Board of Selectmen submitted this article, we vote, we asked for no action on it, but that was really only for a procedural matter. We really want you to go ahead and do it. You know, I just could see where that could be confusing, which, which I realize in this circumstance may be, it may be unavoidable, but that was, that was along the lines of why I was asking about, you know, the, the whole warrant versus some articles, and just trying to understand that a little better. So I, I think my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Well, and to respond to that specifically, I mean, the moderator made your exact point, and I think, I think what he said was, in a circumstance where we would need to abbreviate the warrant, and, and again, I'm sure it's going to be confusing, but no action would instead be interpreted as a pass, we're just moving on. And we'd need to, you know, we need to provide a foundation for that procedural, that procedural vote. But, you know, I think there's a, people are unfortunately being asked to deal with a lot of new things and, you know, but that, I think you're thinking along the same lines.
Joe?
Sorry to interrupt before. Has there been an outreach to the various proponents of the warrants to see to what extent they think that this is an item that could be deferred?
I, you know, that, that's not our call at this point, and frankly, again, once we call the meeting, that's, that would be an issue for the moderator.
I'm talking about before we vote on the warrant. I mean, leading up to this meeting, has there been an outreach, is what I'm asking?
No.
Because I know, I mean, I talked about Arlington before. That's the way they handled it before voting on the warrant. They did an outreach, and some folks said, yes, this is not a real priority, let's hold off. And others said, this really is a priority, we don't want to hold off. I don't know if, it sounds like we have not gone through that analysis.
Well, I think we went through the analysis, we went through the analysis at a different level, I guess. We looked at the warrant and decided that we could create some efficiencies in what was being presented, and otherwise, I think we felt that we could move forward with the remaining articles.
Is, is there any thought about identifying ahead of time articles where we may want to shift to a no-action, given the level of participation we see at town meeting? So if in fact the quorum is reduced, and we've got some articles that we may think warrant extensive debate, and it's not going to happen, we won't know that till the day of the meeting to see how many people show up. A way that we can know ahead of time which items we would then decide, let's hold off on?
You know, I think at some point, Joe, you know, this, the agenda begins to belong to the meeting. I guess I would suppose that, that the, the recommendation to the meeting actually comes from the advisory committee. So, I mean, I guess, you know, if, if we see, we'd have to have 300 people there to start the meeting, and I guess the, the question is, you know, if we get 300 people, are we comfortable moving forward with the agenda that we've proposed? Again, I think that that's, that call is really the call of the advisory committee. I mean, I, I think that, I, I am comfortable moving forward and putting this warrant before the public, under these, under these circumstances with this plan.
I, I share Mary's concern about making sure that we have due deliberation on the appropriate warrant articles. And I know for efficiency reasons, bundling may make sense, but that might inhibit folks' ability to, to call things out. And it may not. For example, we do that on budget items, and he goes through a list, and then someone says, hold, if there's an issue. So that may be a way to proceed.
That's exactly the way he would intend to proceed. If you think about it, right, we do that with over $100 million budget, so.
Yep.
If, I think what he was trying to say, what the moderator was trying to say the other day was just what you're pointing out. If people want to talk about something, they should have the opportunity to talk about it, whether it's part of a bundled grouping or whether it's an individual article. But I think there are things that we can do leading up to the meeting to make that discussion more efficient and, and so that people feel like they have been informed about what is before them. Mary, further comments?
You know, just in terms of the logistics and things, would, would an outdoor meeting mean that, would there be the ability to do presentations, or would the call be made that there would be no presentations this year? My understanding is that that's, that that's not a requirement of town meeting, but certainly outdoors makes that a little more challenging.
I think that's, that's on the list. Tom, you might want to speak to that, the AV.
Sure. So, yeah, so Mary, we could, we left that highlighted in the, in the, the draft version for that reason. We could do, we could do it, or we could not do it. The Town of Hull, for instance, has decided not to do those and to do handouts instead. You know, we could try to do it. We would, it would probably require tents over the screens, probably multiple screens. I worry about people that are quite distant, you know, maybe, you know, several dozen yards away, you know, that, whatever, 100, 200, 200 feet away, being able to see them, see the screens. So, but we'd have to walk through all that for sure. That's a logistical question I think we can, we can all make.
I, I have a hard time thinking about spacing people out on a field and people being able to sort of see and read things, and, you know, if, if, if that goes kind of hand in glove with a vote, and people feel like they can't see something, it, it could be problematic. I've sort of always viewed presentations as, as more of sort of a courtesy versus a requirement of the meeting, and I kind of understand why Hull is taking the approach they are.
And then there's the other issue potentially of, you know, someone up front having, you know, a better understanding of an issue than someone in the back, and their vote maybe perhaps could be construed as having been better informed. So, again, I think that's why Hull didn't do it. I think we, you know, we could do it with, provide the opportunity for handouts. You know, Michelle and I were throwing around the idea of packets. Once we determine what is going to be available for information for the meeting, we can put together pre-made packets and put them on every chair, so when, there's no queuing up in the back of the room to, to pick up everything. You just go to your chair and your socially distant chair, distance to chair, and you pick up your packet, and everything you need is in it. So there's, there are ways that we can do this.
Well, and if, I think, I think communication in advance of a meeting will be, a meeting like this will be so important, and, you know, we have, we have our partners at Harbor Media, our partners at the Hingham Journal and the Hingham Anchor. It almost seems to me that we might want to even encourage that if, if people were thinking about a presentation for town meeting, you know, maybe they do a five or 10-minute spot on Harbor Media about their article, and that's when the presentation is used so that everybody has the full benefit of all the great information and analysis that the, that the boards and committees have done, and they have the benefit of seeing it, seeing it in advance, which, which then I think gets over a lot of the issues around, you know, sunlight and glare and...
Exactly.
Everything else that comes with, with, with something outdoors.
We were talking about approaching Harbor Media to do a roundtable with the moderator and Victor and myself to both go over logistics and to review the warrant. So I think you're right, Mary. The communication plan should be sort of global and logistical, but it also should, should relate to the very details of the meeting.
I would also like to point out that Michelle and I did meet with Michelle Balconi a week or so ago. We let her know that this was a potential option. As a matter of fact, I believe Michelle is on the call, she's on the meeting, so she's hearing this conversation, which is excellent. But, so we have had preliminary conversations with her.
Yeah, I mean, I could see, you know, a little program on the community preservation articles for 2020, and, you know, members of the CPC kind of doing a walkthrough of the different projects, you know, specific articles that are of greater information, maybe Victor doing a little bit of a buzz through of the budget. Um, if if you almost think about it, those could be like public service announcements about the warrant and the articles. That would help educate people in advance um before attending the meeting.
Right.
Right.
And then, you know, for this to work, we also have to do outreach for those folks who can attend to attend. Um, because we need to, we need to get to our quorum. So, you know, so in the in the past, we've sort of held held our cards close to the vest because we really wanted people to actually come to the meeting. Um, and we do want people to come to the meeting in a responsible way and we want them to make that decision for themselves. But we are going to need people to come. So, we I think that needs to be part of the, part of the outreach as well. But I I I like your idea. I think, because I think there's a bunch of articles in here where you could do kind of almost one-off spots. That uh I think people would find helpful. Um, further discussion from my colleagues? Or should should I open it up to the public at this point?
I'm I'm good for right now.
Okay. So, questions from the public with respect to this alternative to hold um uh annual town meeting twenty twenty outside. At the high school field. So I'm not seeing any, not seeing any raised hands. So, you know, I think, I think the question before us today is indoor, outdoor, postponed entirely. Um, and then to the point that we've been talking about, you know, do we endorse this full warrant? Piece of the warrant. You know, I I guess I'm inclined to approve it moving forward, knowing that procedurally, uh, as we gain more information. Uh, we can work with our colleagues, I think, to make adjustments um to to take account of. New information and, you know, what we think is best for the town in terms of how much business we should do uh in this year.
Karen, is it the advisory committee's recommendation that we proceed with a full warrant?
Uh, the advisory committee hasn't taken a position on this, Joe. I mean, Vic- Victor's certainly been part of these calls, but um they have not voted on this.
Do they, will there be a time that they do vote?
Uh, I think this is our call, so. No. I can tell you that um this was the position of the moderator. Uh, Eileen McCracken was on that call. See, she's on this call. And and this is the proposal that is before us. So I think we're the ones that need to make the decision. And like I said, I think that, at least from where I sit, procedurally, we could work out the particular details of what's considered. Um, by twenty twenty annual town meeting with the help of the moderator and the advisory committee.
And and I can, I can tell you all right now too, just as as an aside, Joe, kinda to your question. Um, the, as far as this plan goes, I have received feedback now um from Chief Olson and from Chief Murphy. Uh, they both had a couple of some small suggestions, but in general, the plan seemed to work for both of them. I've also um worked through this with uh our executive health agent, Susan Sarni, who is also on this call. And she is um, she is also in favor of it, again, with uh some suggestions to improve it and make it uh better. But the general concept, that all three of them were in favor of this, if that helps.
You anticipated my next question, so thank you.
Well, no, I think the team that you've outlined, right, that the staff is our office, the town moderator, the town clerk, our I T group. The police, fire, Mike Clancy from the building department, the school department, D P W, town council, harbor media. Um, and, you know, Bonard support on A V, um, on A V stuff, you know, on the, on the sort of. Substance of what's considered by the meeting, I would add the advisory committee, you know, to that loop as well.
And by the way, Karen made sure that the field is in fact, that I ask if the field is in fact available. So, you know, little things. I did confirm that.
That's great. Uh, I'd hate there to be like a cheerleading contest going on.
That's right. That's right.
And a central cheerleading contest. Uh, so the other thing I think that's important for people as a procedural matter would be. The moderators needing, which we we need to also figure out the. Uh, you know, public health logistics right now would be Sunday, the fourteenth. And I don't know that, did did the moderator set a time? Do you remember?
My understanding was it was two o'clock on both days.
And what was the location?
Uh, that I think was going to be um, maybe, we we were actually talking about trying to do it right at the field, weren't we?
The, yeah, you know, I'm sorry, you know about the rain date?
No.
Oh, yeah. Were you going to meet at the high school?
Yes, yeah, that we were going to meet at the, um, yes, we were, we were talking about, you're right, Ma Karen, in that conversation, we never circle back to a final location of it. But I think we had talked about perhaps trying to do it right on the field. So people could get a sense of what the meeting would would look like and how it would be set up, et cetera. Um, but that we would do it on the field and which is of course a big enough space to be um appropriately socially distant and it's outside.
And if not, um, it would be in the gymnasium or the auditorium or somewhere big enough to accommodate. You know, at a socially socially distance spacing the number of people who typically attend.
Right.
Is there a possibility that if there are residents who are uncomfortable walking onto the field? That they could participate in the town meeting by going into the school?
Uh, no, not at this point, no. I think so, what, maybe you want to talk a little bit about handicap access, Tom, because I do think it's important.
Absolutely, yep. So Michelle and I were down at the field yesterday with Katie Hartman and Mike Clancy. Uh, Mike is uh our building commissioner and A D A commissioner. And we walked the field and there are four entrance points uh at each corner of the field, all of which have a double wide gate. And uh, a um, a level surface entrance off the, from the walkway onto the field. Uh, and uh, Mr. Clancy assured me that the that wheelchairs, for instance, are capable of moving uh easily across the field.
So that they they'd be able to access the turf and be able to, okay. So we, it's not like we need to build any sort of ramping or.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I wanted to see it in case that had to happen, but that does not have to happen.
Okay. I mean, I think, Joe, the the question is whether we have one venue or multiple venues. And I think um, I think the idea was if we're outside, we have enough space to only have one venue. Rather than multiple venues inside, um, which again, if we end up with a pouring rainy weekend. You know, we're we're back to, we're back to that, but.
But what what one thing I meant, we mentioned in the uh, in the 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 plan was uh encouraging people to, you know. Come prepared, wear s- with sunscreen and hats, et cetera. Um, I think Michelle liked the idea that maybe we'd make this like a Kentucky Derby hat day, but anyway. Do the great big crazy hats, but I think we should encourage that.
Well, we'd also, um, I saw you have water stations, so we've got to figure out the best way to provide water. You know, I think it's not going to be unheard of for people to bring big umbrellas, but I think, given the spacing of the chairs, that shouldn't be, you know. That shouldn't be, I guess, a big deal, maybe create some obstructive view for people behind. So, you know, again, I think, I think if we, if we pick this path, we got a lot of things to figure out, you know, relatively compressed time.
Do, is remote participation in town meeting lawful and have we considered it?
It is not lawful for open town meeting. Um, I, I gave it a lot of thought, actually. And put forward a plan around that concept. But I I think that it's not really town meeting. Um, and we're trying to replicate, we're trying to replicate town meeting. As as best we can in this environment. So, you know, I think there are ways um to conduct. Participation um by eighteen thousand registered voters in Hingham, giving anybody the opportunity to participate. Um, but it wouldn't be a town meeting. Uh, and at at this point, we would have needed. You know, we would have needed special legislation in order to enact uh or adopt uh procedures for remote participation for open town meeting. The legislature did allow um remote participation for representative town meeting. But the uh, and I guess, is is that part of the pending legislation too, John?
It is, Karen. So that that's a proposal, but it hasn't passed yet. So, um, as of today, there is no remote participation. But the special legislation does allow it for representative town meetings only in its current form.
I mean, I think it, you know, the question you raised, Joe, is, I I, because I, I don't know, from in my own personal life, right? I think, I think the ability to use technology to be present is more and more part of our everyday. Than it has ever been in the past. And so one question is, I think, moving forward. And the moderators association, as I understand it, has been considering this and and is continuing to deliberate it on going, deliberate on it going forward. Absent, even absent the coronavirus, is how best to provide people in towns with open town meeting the ability to participate. You know, because no matter when and where we call a meeting, it's, it's never convenient for every, for anybody. And as towns have grown, you know, does it, does it continue to make sense, you know? I I, you know, I I think it's, I think it, I think it will evolve. But for this moment that we find ourselves in, I think the the best job we can do is try to provide. Uh, you know, a credible and safe location for people to participate in the business of the town. Further questions?
Karen, I just add one thing. Uh, I know that there is uh pending legislation about kind of quorum. Uh, my understanding is that it's in ways and means right now. We don't know if and when it will come out. Um, to the extent that there is, um, there is legislation about uh quarums. And the town wants to consider, you know, in some way altering our quorum of three hundred. Um, I do think that that that's something that would really require some serious consideration. And um, while perhaps not necessary, if if the law passes. Um, it would be important to me that our advisory committee colleagues weigh in on that as a proxy for town meeting.
Yep.
Um, I I actually think that 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 question in and of itself needs to be considered very carefully. Very thoughtfully, and I think that um, there needs to be some public consideration. So that members of the public have the opportunity to weigh in on it if they so desire. So, um, you know, I I know there's a lot to do in a short period of time. But that decision to me, um, I I would hope could involve the advisory committee.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. And I mean, you know, because you've been, you've been on these boards for for the last decade or so. But it took us a long time to reduce quorum. Um, and you may remember, it went through a couple of iterations um coming before uh advisory committee and the board of selectmen. Before what what is now our quorum, you know, proposal or quorum requirement uh passed. And I think people were resistant, I was one of them, to reducing quorum because I think that, you know, to do the business of the town. You need a a critical mass of people that that ought to show up. Um, but I think it sort of harkens back to what Joe said. I think it's, it's difficult um these, in these times. To to gather people on a particular night, particular school night at seven o'clock in the gym. Um, so I I hear you. I um, I would be very concerned about reducing the quorum. To consider, to consider mu- much of the of the warrant. And, you know, I mean, realistically, right, they're saying you could reduce quorum to not less than ten percent of what you otherwise require. So thirty people, you're talking about thirty people approving expenditures of over a hundred million dollars. Like, I just.
I I'm not comfortable with that being a decision of like three people. And so that I I would see the advisory committee as being a helpful resource. If if we have the opportunity to consider that question, and again, I I'd also just make the point that, you know, in an open town meeting. We have to be prepared to receive and welcome anyone who comes. So, you know, even though the quorum changes, if five hundred fifty people show up, five hundred fifty people are welcome. And have an opportunity to engage.
Absolutely.
So I, I, you know, I I think that's important for everybody to remember.
Yep, absolutely. Further questions from anybody? Anybody want to make a statement? Harbor Media, the chiefs?
The the only thing I wanted to point out was um, there's a one remaining question and it does show up in the warrant. Is the location of uh precinct five A, which is the Linden Ponds precinct this year. Uh, you guys are going to be taking this up on Tuesday night. Um, so what we're, what the plan is, just so you know, logistically, is this is, everything is just so condensed. Um, we're going to take your vote tonight and we're going to send the warrant as it is, as has been presented to you, to the um, to the printer. They're going to get it all queued up, prepare it, whatever they got to do over the weekend, get it all ready to go. And on Wednesday morning or or Tuesday night, we're going to email them with a final language. Uh, if it's changed, then we'll give them new language. If it hasn't, then they will uh leave it alone on the precinct language. Um, about whether or not to move precinct five A to the middle school. Uh, that is being proposed. Uh, Eileen is on the phone. You you did receive communication just a couple of hours ago on this. Um, you may not have been able to have a chance to see it. And again, this is before you on Tuesday night. I just wanted you to know that that is something that is reported in our warrant. So it's, it's going to be in there, but if it needs to change, we'll change it after your your vote on Tuesday night.
Great. That that's a great outcome because that that was a lot to consider today, I think.
Yeah, yeah, too much.
I Eileen, do you want to say anything about that or we'll talk about it on Tuesday?
Sure, we can talk about it on Tuesday. I think that um, from what I sent to you, you'd, you know, it would help you understand the conditions there. So.
Yep, okay.
But sure, Tuesday is when it's supposed to be voted on, so that's great. As long as you can change the warrant, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Great, great. That'll be great.
We did, we did confirm that with the printer today. They have a lot of prep to do. They got to do a lot of stuff. They couldn't have many changes that were going to change formatting itself. But one, a couple of words within one sentence wouldn't do that, so we can do that on Wednesday morning.
Okay. Um, can I ask a question about the vote? Maybe this is a question for John. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't appear any rain date is specified. Do we need to do that as part of the, as part of the notice? The rain date certainly appears right now on the draft of the cover of the warrant, I think, doesn't it?
Does.
It does, and I'd sent you an email, Karen. I don't know if you had a chance to see it or not, but I do think um. If if that is going to be the final rain date, um, we should insert that language on page twenty nine. Uh, where it is the notice to the constable to uh warn the inhabitants of the town as to the date and time of the. Of the meeting, we should add in a a further sentence, putting the rain date right in there so that the front cover matches the internal. Uh, notice that the constable is going to give to everyone.
And how about our vote today? Because the vote, at least I might be looking at the wrong version, but the vote today only indicates Saturday. It doesn't indicate a rain date. I I was assuming we would have to vote that as well.
I think um, I did not include that in there because I consider the adoption of the warrant i- i- an adoption of the document as a whole. Um, and I I was trying not to make the the vote too wordy, but there's nothing, if we want to throw that in, I don't have a problem with that. I think the the vote to establish the initial date and that you're voting to approve the warrant in its entirety and to give notice, I think incorporates the rain date into it.
I I for one would feel more comfortable if we included the rain date in the motion.
I I. Um, and then at Hingham High School, is that sufficient um in the vote that we take today? I mean, I I think it gives us some latitude, particularly on the second, on the rain date, if we need to move inside. But um, uh, do we need to indicate that it's at the um, on the athletic field? Or we don't need to do that in the vote?
I think you're you're giving the location whether you're, whether you're in or out. I think the warrant itself that you're adopting gives the specifics. Um, so I'd want to be a little bit careful about if you decide to move it in on the rain date that we haven't limited ourselves um too much.
Our vote in the second paragraph specifically referenced the meeting outdoors.
It does, and the where as provision.
Oh, right, right, okay, okay. Okay.
So I think by adopting the warrant, you you're you're essentially, all of the language and all the notice provisions in the warrant are what you're adopting. Uh, we probably on a typical year would not have a vote this specific, I think, just because of the circumstances. I think we're, we're being a little bit more cautious and I'm comfortable adding anything you want to that, the rain date or whatever else. Um, but I think as a legal matter, simply scheduling the meeting and adopting the warrant incorporates. incorporates all of the information that's in the warrant and the notice into the votes.
Okay, okay. I, I guess I've, like Joe, I think, uh, I'd like to include the rain date in the motion that we in the vote, vote language that we take today.
Sure.
Um, okay, uh, I don't know. It seems like I, it, it's, this is a big deal, you know, it's just, it's a, I, I know that, you know, it, it's not ideal that this comes up on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. Um, I have been an avid participant, as is Joe and Mary and others on the line, at town meeting. I think it's a really important um part of what makes Hingham, Hingham and uh, you know, changing it around feels odd. Um, but again, I, I also feel like these are very unusual circumstances, and the motivation for the change is really to um, to try to keep people as safe as we possibly can. All right, uh, any further discussion? I would uh accept a motion if my colleagues were ready to make it.
I'm going to let Joe make the motion since he wants to add some language in there.
And the only thing I would ask, Joe, is we include the whereas in there, just so we're creating the record as to why we're doing this.
Yes, so.
Okay, thanks.
I will propose the following motion. I move whereas the Board of Selectmen previously voted on March 31, 2020 to delay the Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting from Monday, April 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM until Monday, June 22, 2020 at 7:00 PM pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 9. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has since determined that it is in the best interest of the residents of the Town of Hingham to hold the Hingham Annual Town Meeting outdoors and during the day to protect the public health of the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham during the COVID-19 public health emergency. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen hereby votes to schedule the Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting for Saturday, June 20, um, yeah, June 20, 2020 at 2:00 PM with a rain date of June 21, 2020 at 2:00 PM at the Hingham High School pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 9. And to approve, adopt and sign the attached warrant pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10, to soon, to so notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham of said annual town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Uh, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, I think the work begins in earnest or has begun and we'll need to continue to uh move forward. Um, you know, Tom, I, I think it's going to be important to keep us updated uh on the plans as they progress. Um, you know, this might be something that we add to your report on Tuesday nights. Um, I think that we need to make an announcement on Tuesday night, uh, you know, with some detail around what and why we're doing it, what we're doing. Um, and then there may be pieces of this that, you know, each one of the three of us are asked to take on and um, and bring to ground, so. Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, like I said, I think there are a lot of logistical pieces of this, but there are also kind of policy and communication pieces that the Board of Selectmen should have a role in.
If I can follow up with that. Uh, Tom, what, what is the plan for posting this information on the town website?
So I'd like to get the, that, um, what do I call it? The concept plan, um, a little bit more finalized. We had a few questions, outstanding questions on there, so I can probably get that done over the course of this weekend. Uh, as soon as it's complete, I'd run it by the three of you, make sure it's what you expected, and then uh post it to the website as soon as it's ready to be done. Um, I would say by the end of the weekend, maybe.
Okay, I mean, because I've, I've been getting calls from residents saying, what's happening with town meeting? What's going on? And so I think the sooner we get it, get it out there.
So, so we could post a message about the date and time of town meeting and, and the fact that it will be outdoors. What I was, what I was speaking of was the um, was the actual plan. Uh, that may not be ready for posting, but we could definitely do a message.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. That's a good idea.
I think that'd be helpful. I'm sorry, Mary?
Save the date.
Yes, exactly. Save, save the date.
I'll ask, I'll ask our PIO to take care of that.
If I can add, you know, I went into this meeting with a lot of the concerns that Mary voiced. Uh, but I think ultimately, um, what I heard from Karen rang true, which is we have a town to run, and there will be circumstances that we don't anticipate in the future, and we still need to continue, uh, and continue as best we can in managing the town's business and bringing the town together with town meetings. So I think this is the right solution.
Not an easy one, but I think, I think uh, I have confidence in the town team uh and in, in, in my volunteer colleagues that uh, we will, we will do our very, very best to anticipate the circumstances and provide the relevant communication um to allow citizens to participate, so. Anyway, uh, I don't know why it's hitting me so hard. Maybe it's just Friday afternoon, but this is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
Uh, so thank you. Thanks, everybody who's on the line, and um, I, I do think, um, I do think Joe's right, just a uh, sort of a banner or message or whatever that we took this vote today and, and that, and that a plan will, you know, comprehensive plan will be forthcoming.
Perfect, will do.
Okay. Uh, any further, anything further? Any other announcements or anything for this afternoon? Okay, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Have a great weekend. Be safe, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Take care, thank you.